Let's start right off the bat. We have our resolution approving final plan of first addition to Stonegate Village Sunny Brook Edition subdivision.
Can you move that by closer, Shani?
No, I can't do that.
This is a one lot subdivision out behind the Sunny Brook assisted living facility. As you can see here, we subdivided the lot for Sunny Brook in 2006, November 2006. Pearson, Mike Pearson owns the property and looking to subdivide an additional one lot, approximately just under five acres, 4.96 acres. Sunny Brook has interest in acquiring additional land behind them. So, one lot subdivision may have potential future purchase along this side as well. Just have the land around them and potentially expand. Any questions?
Any comments?
It's a simple subdivision. The utilities are there in Indian Hills Drive, so.
Anybody got any, Bishop, do you give with it? Sounds good to me. MPT? Sorry.
Who's that? No, I have nothing here.
Okay. Bishop, you're good.
This looks pretty straightforward.
Okay. All right. We have a presentation for a fundraising request for educational studies. So is that the genius?
This is the genius. It is so famous now in Burlington. Her name's Davina Johnson. She's 14. I'm her mom, Tammy. And she's been invited by the National Youth Leadership Forum to attend Duke Medical School this summer and study medicine. She wants to be a cardiologist, pediatric cardiologist, excuse me. And because she was born with pulmonary valve stenosis and with surgery, she now has pulmonary valve stenosis with regurgitation, which in English means she has a leaky heart. So, we were wondering if, we were hoping that the city of Burlington would help us with fundraising. She needs $4,000 in tuition. Tuition, airfare, two college credits from George Mason University. And I'll let you guys ask her questions.
Are you going to stay in Burlington?
Yeah.
I'm just teasing. I'm just. So, tell us about it. What do you think?
Um, what do you mean?
So, what do you, what's the, what do you think about going to this?
I'm like really excited because Duke is my dream school and that's where I'm going to be staying at.
And how long is your program this time?
Nine days.
Nine days? So you'll be on site. That's exciting. How did you get hooked up with this?
Um, my teachers nominated me.
Wonderful.
Do you have an address, like if anybody in our television audience wants to contribute?
Yes, actually we do. We were actually, she had a article in the Life Science Section this last Sunday's paper.
Okay.
Which did include all addresses and phone numbers. But we'd be more than willing to give that out again. The phone number's 319-572-8603.
Can you, can you move to the microphone just to make sure that everybody can hear?
And the address is to Davina Johnson, D-A-V-I-N-A. It's 505 South Marshall Street in Burlington, Iowa, 52601. We're very proud of her.
Oh, I imagine.
And we're just hoping this is a once in a lifetime opportunity that we cannot allow for.
You have a lot to be proud of, that's for sure. Point guard, how does that normally, how do we normally do something like that?
Fund something like that?
I know it's unusual request that the city probably doesn't get, but the city also doesn't see an exceptional student like this, or at least we don't hear about it, so.
When's the school?
Um, the fundraising date that we have to have all the money due in is March 14th, but her visit dates are July 25th to August 2nd.
And how much have you raised so far?
500.
Okay.
We have been doing a drive. It's called Pennies for Tuition. And we've actually been telling everybody we'll accept everything from pennies to pop cans. We've been trying door to door, but Burlington's lovely weather has ceased that for the moment.
Imagine that.
And we've been going business to business asking. We have containers up at Burlington High School, Aldo Leopold, Core Secondary, and administration building for the school district.
I would wonder, I don't know if we're on this here, but if they could set up a table at the library for donations.
We've actually received donations already from some of the employees at the library.
I mean, even if you set a table up there on a Saturday or something, I don't think people value education there, I think so.
Point guard.
That's a neat idea. And one of the things, when you talk about the schools and you mentioned that on the phone too, having a donation cans, I think is something that's very appropriate and it fits within the context of the kind of things that we can.
So far within the schools, we've only donated approximately $25 in the last two weeks. So, we're still pushing, 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 and we really want her to go. This is something that we've donated our own money for, so.
Well, I'll tell you what, that's, I think it's phenomenal for one, that you would get recognized by your teachers and I think your goals are definitely achievable. You seem very, very bright and I remember you to be very, very bright. You were just very, very shorter the last time I saw you. But I guess people grow and the old people, we just lose our hair. So, what, I mean, I definitely would be up for setting up a can down here at City Hall and I don't know, again, where else we could, where else we could assist in that other than, other than just pushing through the.
That, I mean, if you, if you wanted to do something other than that, those are the routes I can think of that make the most sense.
We have a fundraiser going on at SCC currently. Kelly Huber from the Upper Bound Program, which she's involved in, they're setting that up. I'm not exactly sure of the dates. She hasn't told me. It's kind of a surprise thing.
And do you, do you have a church organization that maybe you're working through also that we could publicize that?
We contacted churches and churches are not willing to help her, even our own church, unfortunately. But that's why we've come to the city of Burlington and we're asking if even just a small, one-time donation, every little bit's helping.
Well, the more you get your message out, the more people see you and the more people know the need and the more publicity you get, and that's the key to doing that, so.
Now, our next step is getting her on the radio.
Okay.
You need to do that. But I will go to both of the churches that I, that I pastor and I'll, I'll definitely take up a, a collection for you there and I'll encourage some, some other friends of mine to, to see if they'll follow suit. And I think, I think as, as a community, we're really good about coming together for people.
Burlington's great.
Yeah. And I think you'll be surprised. I think, I definitely think you'll be able to meet that, that mark. That's my, that's my hope and prayer, but I'll definitely do everything that I can do personally and I'll also, your address, I'll, I'll drop off a personal check too. I always like to try to lead by example, so.
Thank you.
I'm poor, so it's not going to be a whole lot.
And I was going to say, I'll do that too.
Every penny counts to us. We went to the fire department and they said we had to talk to you. I went to the police department and they said we had to talk to you, so.
And likewise, I think many of us will make phone calls and see what we can do to help you out.
Yes.
I think there's, I think there's some, some heartstrings we can pull on and some purse strings, so.
Thank you. Thank you. God bless you.
Come and get this. Call me tomorrow. I'll, I'll do something too.
Hey, Tim, I could use some money. Can I? He never answers my calls when I'm talking about money.
I've all had a whole man money.
She got, she did get a donation from shelter insurance gentleman there. His name's Matt.
He said if I raise the money, he'll give me $200 for spending. I'm down there.
Especially if I have spending cash while she's down there.
Well, then we need to try to make sure you get that money and I think you'll be surprised, but you just keep getting your voice out there and I guarantee you, I know most of us on the council, well, all of us on the council will reach out to, to somebody and.
I bet, I bet there's a few doctors that'll make a few donations too. They want, they need some more in their ranks. What do you think?
Yes. They need a beautiful little redheaded cardiologist.
You betcha.
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good deal. Okay. Beth, a dollar fifty. You're up. That was my other joke that nobody caught. I'm really struggling tonight. Yeah, Beth Neckel, dollar fifty. Okay.
P105.
What's that?
P105.
Yeah, there you go. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sweet. That's good.
Uh-oh. Second hand. Going to hibernation. There we go. Just went, went to sleep. Well, thank you guys for allowing me to be here and just report to you kind of the status of the Convention and Visitors Bureau and how we did in 2013. On the CDB, we had a busy year this past year implementing new programs, obtaining new business and retaining existing business for the community. Here we go. This will show you the impact of travel and as you'll see, tourism is continuing to grow in our community. It's now a $121 million industry. We rank currently 13th in the state for tourism expenditures and you'll also see there that tourism is more than just heads and beds. I know we spend a lot of time talking about heads and beds and the importance of that and it is very important, but it also means it's, we got to look for cheeks in the seats of our restaurants and torsos through the turnstiles of our entertainment venues. So, you'll see all the different facets of our community that tourism reaches out to. Tourism also produces jobs. These jobs can range from hotels to restaurants, retail stores to attractions, banks to construction projects. And tourism also imports money into our community, which lessens the, the tax burden on our local, that our local residents have to pay. Visits, views, likes and stays, these are, these are things that our office monitors on a daily basis. Our website is visitburlingtoniowa.com and you'll see our page views and our visits. And our website actually saw a 40% increase in traffic in 2013. So, we're, we are doing all of our, all of our messaging, our marketing messaging points people to our website, so we need to make sure that people can get there and get the information that they need.
That's a big increase.
Our Facebook page, this is something we spent a lot of time working on gaining new engagement and likes on that particular page. And in 2013, we had 2,800 new people like our page and I'll talk about some programs that we did to, to help increase that and how we got the, the fan base that we want. And then the Port of Burlington Welcome Center, this is something that our office manages. We saw over 10,000 visitors to the Welcome Center in 2013 and it was visited by all the states except Connecticut and Rhode Island, so we need to look to recruit some, some of those visitors to our area this next year. But the number I really want to pay close attention to under the Welcome Center is we participate in a survey with the Iowa Tourism Office every year. And one of the questions on that survey is, did you extend your stay due to your visit at the Welcome Center? Our volunteers down there do an outstanding job selling our community. We courage them to try and get our visitors to stay in our community an extra hour, day, overnight, because every minute they spend more time in our community means that they're spending more dollars. So, 32% of our visitors to the Welcome Center last year extended their stay and that's up from about 24% the, the previous year. And then you'll see our occupancy. Our occupancy average for last year was about 60.6% and I'm going to show you a graph here in, in a minute that will kind of highlight kind of when our slower times are and when our busier times are. But I also get data from the Iowa Tourism Office that shows us the state average. And what the state average is, is it's the 10 largest communities in the state of Iowa. We get their hotel numbers, so we can kind of see where are we at in comparison to the rest of the state. So, in 2013, our state occupancy was about 59.1%, so we're just slightly above, above the, the average. This shows kind of our hotel motel occupancy. You'll see the green is 2013. You'll see first quarter, January through March, we started off the year quite slow, but once second, third and fourth quarter hit, you'll see those numbers shot up. They're pretty, pretty high. So, our occupancy was down 1% if you compare this to 2012. And then if you compare us to the top 10 Iowa communities, which their occupancy was 59.1, they showed a .1% increase in occupancy. This will show the hotel motel tax receipts. The red is what the portion that the Convention and Visitors Bureau receives and the blue is what the city of Burlington receives. And our hotel motel tax receipts were down about 5% for the city of Burlington in 2013. And we use our portion, we reinvest those dollars to help grow the industry and to hopefully help grow the revenues, whether it be through hotel motel tax or sales tax revenue through the, through the, through people traveling to our area. Some annual highlights I just wanted to touch on today is one of, a big, big project we worked on is sports. Sports is a major industry for our area and drives a lot of tourism to our area. So, we formed a sports commission about two years ago and the purpose of the sports commission is to help promote sporting events in our community and to brainstorm what are some new events that we could bring into our community that are sports related. But also because we have an active sports commission, we are eligible to apply for a regional sports authority district through the Iowa Tourism Office. And so, we applied in FY13 and were unsuccessful. So, we, we got back together and we put in another application for FY14 and we were successful. So, there's a $50,000 state grant that required a, a match to that as well, a $25,000 match that we have nine sporting events that we're partnering with that are receiving those funds. And of those nine events, their economic impact to our community is over $3.8 million. So, just those nine events have a great impact on our, on our local economy. The Preserve Iowa Summit, this was a large conference in our downtown this past August. It brought about 300 people to our area and it was held in the downtown, which is kind of a non-traditional meetings and conventions location, but I will tell you, we had such great compliments on our community. And when I travel around the state and I know many other people do too that came to that conference, they, they were just in awe of our architecture and all the great things that we have going on in our area. A lot of downtown businesses realized near record sales days and our hotel motel occupancy was up about 5% for that month. So, we need to continue to work to attract more events like that to our area. And then just a bonus to that, because we hosted that conference in our community, we were able to obtain the Amtrak Exhibit Train. And that was a great attraction to have in our community that the public could tour and I think we had over 2,600 people that toured that attraction. So, again, a nice bonus for hosting that event in our community. I don't know where you guys go to get your travel information, but a lot of people are going to the web, their smartphones, maybe TripAdvisor, Google. So, it's important that we're, we're letting our marketing message out in that manner. So, we have worked very hard to diversify our marketing efforts digitally. We, we're doing a lot through TripAdvisor, Google AdWords, and we have a larger presence on the Iowa Tourism, Travel Iowa website. This has helped our website traffic, I think, increase as much as it has by that 40%. We're getting people to our website for more information, as well as our community guide visitation, which you guys have, I gave you a hard copy. We also have that online, so people can click it and download it digitally from their, from their home computer and we saw that increase by 55%. And then the last thing I wanted, well, a couple of things. Increase our social media presence. We really worked on that Facebook page and what we did is, I would encourage everyone here to go out and like, visit Burlington, Iowa, but more important, we, we want people that don't live here to like, visit Burlington, Iowa, because we want to bring them into our community. So, we did a targeted campaign that included television, social media and digital advertising in the Des Moines market and that really helped escalate our fan base and get us fans in those areas that are outside of our community. And then building onto that, we did the targeted Des Moines marketing campaign also. In the past, we've done television advertising in a variety of different markets. Instead of going into multiple markets, we decided just to target one market and that was the Des Moines market and we saw 106% increase in our website traffic based on that, on that campaign. Community event funding, this is another part of the Convention and Visitors Bureau budget that is very important. It's important that we support events that bring people to our community for overnight stays. We awarded a little over $21,000 in 2013. The, the events with the asterisks are actually recipients of sports authority funding. So, they were not able to apply for the community event funding, they could just apply for either or. So, you'll see those designated here. But since 2008, when I look back at my records, we have awarded over $150,000 in grants to events that bring people to our community. Some marketing things, like I said, we do digital, we do print, we do television. We're working on capturing more images. We have a very beautiful community, so we want to do what we can to showcase it and visually, I think we, we do, we, we have a lot to offer to our, to our visitors and to our locals. If you see on the lower level there, that's a semi trailer that we, this was a new opportunity. The Iowa Alcohol and Beverage Division selected nine communities to partner with and this is a rolling billboard throughout the state of Iowa. You probably have never seen it in Burlington and if it is, you call me because it, it shouldn't be here. We should have it out on the road doing its job. But this is going to be an 18-month commitment. It, it launched July 1st of last year, so it will go through 2014. And then our digital, you'll see a digital ad up there, TripAdvisor. Now, we're doing a lot with that, trying to, we purchased some, some sponsorship with TripAdvisor, so we can control the content and the photography on that site and that's helped boost TripAdvisor to the top number five refer site to, to visitburlingtoniowa.com. So, return on investment. If we look back at 2013, the CDB was responsible for booking, servicing and/or providing financial assistance to 41 conventions, meetings, groups, tours, reunions and events. So, if we look at that and we, the economic impact and we use statewide average visitor spending numbers is over $5.4 million to the community. So, for every dollar of hotel motel tax that we invest in sales and marketing for the past year, 2013, the return on investment was $15.21 in direct spending to the greater Burlington area. Look ahead, we've got a very exciting year. We're hosting a lot of great events and groups in our area and every day this list, I have, it's, it's growing and growing for this year and then we're booking a lot in for 2015 right now. I'm going to go to another slide for the Iowa State Bowling Association Tournament, so I will talk about that in a minute, but we're going to be hosting our first national junior college championship event in our community in May. It's the men's golf championship. We're working with SCC and Spirit Hollow on that and I hope that's just the first of many events that we can host for a national junior college. There's lots of other opportunities with that organization and they bring people to us from all over. Optimist Club State Convention's going to be in August. The Red Hat Society Convention is in September. The Iowa Motion Pictures Awards Gala, we got the bid on that. That's going to be at the Capitol Theater in March. And then the Iowa Fertilizer Project, this is important to our office and we stay in constant communication with this organization. We deliver lots and lots of community guides down to them because these are people that are in our community that have dollars to spend and are looking for things to do. So, it's our job to make sure that they have the availability of things to do.
What's the Red Hat Society? What's that?
That's a group of ladies.
Sorry I asked. Man, the crowd just turned on me. I tell you. Whoo.
Now you'll know.
We'll talk later.
Say, "I'll tell you later, shut up."
The Iowa State Bowling Association Tournament kicked off. This is the second weekend, this past weekend that it was in our community. Great event for our community. I'm confident that first quarter receipts are going to be up and a large factor to that is, is this very event. Over 400 participants each weekend. It's a 15-weekend event. We'll be hosting this thing through May. Every weekend, over 11,000 people, if you look at participants, spectators and officials, we're anticipating 3, 3,500 room nights sold and an economic impact of 1.4 million. So, this is an event that we bid on, it would have been two years ago, so we're, you have to bid on it early and then wait for it to get to town, but great event and the Burlington Men's Bowling Association has been a great partner on this and they are working very hard right now.
Not a bad question. When you say bid on it, then what is the bid or how do you bid on it?
We have to, we go to, we go and give a presentation and then we have to put together a financial package in order to obtain it to our community.
And so, something like, what was the bid on this? Do you mind?
Well, it was a combination of our office and then several other partners. I think our total package was around $15,000 to get it here, so. Very good event and they do rotate this through the three regions in Iowa, so I don't know. It's, the last time we hosted was 2007, so we'll, we'll go after it again. It's a, it's a great event. These are some, I'm not going to go through all these, but these are some of our goals for 2014 that I'm very excited about working on. We're going to continue to diversify our digital marketing efforts. I really think that is where people, to, to drive people to our website, to get the information that they need, we need to continue to implement that into our marketing plan. We're going to do a lot of search engine marketing as well. We are, we've purchased some digital kiosks to put in our community that should be arriving within the next few weeks, but in addition to that, we want to put some brochure racks. It's important for us to get people here, to market, to get people here, but once they're here, we also need to make sure they're armed with the right information. So, we need to get these guides into people's hands. I talked a lot about the Regional Sports Authority District, so I will skip over that. One that I want to give credit to my steering committee, which functions as my board, is the, and the development and implementation of Invent an Event. They put together this program to try and spur a new non-peak season event for our community. As you see at that, on that occupancy chart, October through March tends to be slower times of year. So, they have put some seed money out there to an organization or a business that comes up with an idea and can implement it into our community for a non-peak seasonal festival or event. So, we'll keep you posted on that. And then the last thing I will highlight is we are going to be releasing an RFP to, for the, some, some research for a community way, community-wide wayfinding study. And this is something that was talked a lot through the strategic planning process the city did this last year. Signage is huge and when, when you have visitors to the community, we, a way that we can help lengthen their stay is to have signage that directs people where things are at and a lot of communities have done community-wide wayfindings and so. It's important for us to get people here, to market, to get people here. But once they're here, we also need to make sure they're armed with the right information. So we need to get these guides into people's hands. I talked a lot about the Regional Sports Authority District, so I will skip over that. One that I want to give credit to my steering committee, which functions as my board, is the, and the development and implementation of Invent an Event. They put together this program to try and spur a new non-peak season event for our community. As you see at that, on that occupancy chart, October through March tends to be slower times of year. So they have put some seed money out there to an organization or a business that comes up with an idea and can implement it into our community for a non-peak seasonal festival or event. So we'll keep you posted on that. And then the last thing I will highlight is, we are going to be releasing an RFP to, for the, some, some research for a community way, community-wide wayfinding study. And this is something that was talked a lot through the strategic planning process the city did this last year. Signage is huge. And when, when you have visitors to the community, we, a way that we can help lengthen their stay is to have signage that directs people where things are at. And a lot of communities have done community-wide wayfindings. And so we want to do, we want, at least the Convention and Visitors Bureau wants to be the partner to get, to get the research done and get the ball rolling. But that's something that we're gonna take on this, this calendar year. So, that's all I have for you today. I know it's a lot of information. But if you have any questions right now or anytime throughout the year, please don't hesitate to give me a call.
Thank you. Thank you. Good job. PT, we got some appointments.
Okay, I can go over those. There are a few appointments. Historical Preservation Commission, the terms for commission members, Kay Weiss and Steve Freibert expire, expired 1/1/2014, and they would like to be reappointed. It is requested, oh yeah, to, to a new three-year term that would expire 1/1/2017. The Humans Right, Human Rights Commission, there were, are three vacancies on this commission. Linda Robinson would like to serve. And on a new three-year term that would expire 2/18/2017. And additionally, the term for commission member Ann Distlehorse will expire 2/19/2017 this year. She's expressed an interest in serving additional term on this commission. And it's requested that the council consider reappointing Ann Distlehorse to a new three-year term. So I think that's two people for three vacancies. So we have another vacancy up at, if somebody's interested. Low-Rit Housing Agency, there's two vacancies on this committee. Austin Schwartz and James Seberg have expressed an interest in serving on these committees. And these would be two new, two, new, two-year terms that would expire 2/18/2016. I think their applications are attached.
Anybody have anything to address on that?
Need one more for the one, so.
Okay. Okay, we have a proposal for a funding reduction from the Burlington Bees. Is there anybody here from the Bees? Point guard?
I'm from the Bees, oh.
I think you brought this back, didn't you, Bob?
Yeah. I forget the dollar, $18.
Well, it's in the packet too, but their, they, their group has, in recognition of the financial circumstances, the city's facing, they're also, of course, tight budgets too. But they did come to an agreement over the next five years, a specific period of time, that they would suspend the annual 10 monthly payments of $628.50 that are made. Amounts to $6285 annually. Reduction that the city would be obligated to cover. And that's through Hotel Motel that we cover that?
I met with Dave Walters, president of the Bees. And we'd like more than that, but he said that's what we can do. They already had a board meeting and that's what they came up with. So, accepted it, said I would refer it to the Bees.
And we thank you, Bob.
Hard work.
It is.
Somebody's gotta do it.
Yeah.
And we thank the Bees for recognizing that the city's been very generous and that they, and they can find a way to do this. That's wonderful.
I'll second that.
Yep. Appreciate anything we can do.
Okay.
I assumed it would be 15. Yes, it says commencing on July 1, 2014.
Okay. Looks like we have the budget that we need to go over. And before we do get started, I just wanna, I kinda don't wanna be redundant on some things that we've kind of already gone over a million times, so. But if there's some new things to address, let's, let's get down to business. Counsel?
Mayor, I've given a lot of consideration to what's taken place so far. And I've weighed a lot of what my constituencies had to say to me. And with that being said, I'll make it quick. I just, I've come up with some ideas and, and if you would, please hear me out and, um, the full package of what I'm going to offer and, and then beat me up as much as you want. At the top of my list, I have our efforts to reduce our deficits in, in various departments. I think we're being very aggressive considering the rest of our budget and what it's costing us in, in, in maintenance and personnel. I would propose that instead of funding that with the tax dollars, that we reduce that by $200,000. And instead, that we increase fees at the Recplex an additional 5% across the board.
I didn't understand what, what are we reducing 200,000?
The def, the, the 30, the def, the, the tax funding that we're using to fund the deficits in the various revenue accounts.
Okay.
Right? I'm saying, in, increase fees at the Recplex another 5% across the board. They've got a deficit, let them, let them pay for it. Increase fees at the golf course, of course, 5%. Between the two, that's, by my estimates, that's about $36,000 or roughly 4, 4 and 4 and 1/2 cents. Instead of increasing the garbage fees 25 cents, increase it 50 cents a month. That should generate, if I'm right, around $28,000. That's another 4.2 cents. The Bees, with their 68, 22 a year, that's roughly a penny in the property taxes. We've got $30,000 funded in the sidewalk fund. Reduce that by 12,000, that's another 1.8, 0.018 cents. Or 1.8 cents, I'm sorry. On nuisance abatements, I'd propose that we, we increase the fees that we charge, administrative fees, from $50 to $100. I think that's, that's gonna play two ways. It's going to, it's going to help with funding those deficits as well as, as well as encourage people to start taking care of those nuisances. We've got a, we've got an awful lot that we have that are repeaters, that pay their bills. I think if we increase that, if we double those fees. And, and I, and I think we're justified in that because we've got to send people out to address those nuisances time and time and time again. Because they have to go in and then they have to placard it, and then they have to send them notice. And then they have to go out again and they have to make, try to make contact with them. And then, and then our clerk, city clerk has to deal with it. And then sometimes we have to have our city attorney deal with it. So, let's, let's try drawing those funds to what they, they need to be to cover the cost.
And just to, just to piggyback off that, this was something that we had talked about, putting more teeth in the, in the nuisance last year. So, some of that kinda slipped to me, but I'm glad you brought that up because that's something that we had discussed that we, we wanted to do prior.
What, what it boils down to here is we've reduced, I've reduced that task, tax asking by about 45 cents. Pulled a $303,000. With $103,000 not going back into the deficit funds for those departments that, that have deficits, mainly the revenue, the revenue funds. Still leaves us $97,000 to have to deal with the rest of the year. But I'm, I'm prepared to sit down and work the rest of the year at, at finding ways to cut and ways to make up that $97,000. So I'm not trying to deviate from the financial goals, but I'm trying to do my best to not put anymore, at this time, on the back of the departments or, or hit the taxpayers with a huge tax increase. But do it through reducing our, our, our goal slightly for the year and increasing fees on those that use these facilities. Go ahead, Heather.
On the golf course, we had already put in an increase, right, Eric?
3%.
Yep. And you were saying add to that?
Add another 5%.
Add another 5.
Yeah.
So it'd be a total of 8%.
Yeah.
Okay.
What does that come up to in dollars?
I'd have to look at that. And we-
Okay, I was just wondering if you had it.
And I guess what I'd say, I'm open to, about any of that that you said. But I guess, it seems like we've talked about those things in the past and we've had to go through these big discussions. I'm wondering if we can get that done in this short period of time. Because, I mean, I'm, we're looking, yes, everything you said there. But, and, and I wanna be committed to, you know, no further tax increases in the future or lower numbers. But I just, I guess I'm worried about the timeline to get, to say that we could do all those on this budget.
That's the city manager. You see a time problem in implementing his ideas?
For the fees?
Yeah.
Have you already started doing season passes?
Yeah, at the golf course, we have.
So your, your revenues for, some of that's gonna be kinda difficult when we've already gone out on season passes on the, on the golf course. You can, implementing it with the Recplex isn't an issue. I don't think you have anything that, that that would come into play with them?
No, it'd just be last fall or winter, we increased sponsorship fees and rental fees. I think we've already contacted some of the sponsors on that. But the day, the gates and the lead fees, we haven't started, so, you know.
So those, those would be easier to implement?
You could implement those.
The daily fees you could increase easily enough?
You can increase the daily fees.
You can increase the fees on the, on the yearly fees too. Just not for those that have already paid. Someone was on the ball and got the job done and got a bargain.
And you could, I mean, theoretically, you could increase the daily fees more than the 5% to offset. I just asked Eric and you didn't hear in the background. The daily fees contribute a fair amount, a fair chunk of change.
But our, our season, we're selling passes from fiscal year 2014. 2015 passes will be next year, so that, I mean, depending how you look at that. And we'd still catch some, all the season passes for next fiscal year, next spring.
Spring.
So that, that would make sense to increase that even for next year and daily fees for this year.
That sounds fine with me. I have no problem there at all.
So, what are your calculations then on the bottom line? The, the tax increase would amount to what then?
Oh, it'd be reduced by 3 cents.
Hi.
Yeah, I think-
What did you say? You don't have that.
I might come over and kiss you right on the mouth.
We're gonna stop this meeting for a minute, but I want you to leave that on. Leave that on the air.
So what, what was the, the question was?
I'll buy you a drink tonight.
Now you're talking.
As long as it's less than $3.
Mr. Frano, what do you think on the, on the, the $200,000 decrease?
I guess my other question-
How you doing it?
Would be the sewer thing. Not that I'm opposed to it, but just that we've had so much, so many people come forward about their water and sewer and trash bills that that would be the problem.
I think when you look at the, was there not a deficit in that account of $154,170? It looks like as of 6/30/13?
Yeah, but we're not transferring any money over to that account.
From the general fund?
Yeah, that's, it's already being, that deficit's already being taken care of by the fee structure. And that's part of, you know. So increasing the fee over there would pay off that deficit quicker. But we're, it wouldn't offset anything because we're not transferring any money over there.
Well, I still didn't have a problem with a 50 cent increase on my bill for, for garbage.
And I'm not saying I do, I'm just saying that we've had a lot of people express how much those bills have gone up.
I agree. It just, it's, it's either taxes or, or fees. Fees seem to be more palatable.
What you're talking about with the golf course and Recplex over five years is $180,000. Reducing the sidewalk by 12,000 a year is $60,000.
I'm not, I'm, I'm talking about this year's budget, Jim. I'm not talking about the next five. I'm talking about this year's budget.
Just, just one year?
That's what I'm, yeah, that's what I'm talking about. We've gotta work on the rest of, we, you-
Are you not paying, so you just don't wanna put money from, reduce that with the, what's going over the general fund to those other accounts by 200,000? Annual, annually?
Annually, no, that's not what I'm talking about, annually. But I don't, this wouldn't work if we, if we'd done that. I'm talking about-
Just for the year.
Just getting this, this budget dealt with.
But what are you gonna do, how are you gonna address it for next year?
Well, that's, we're, we're gonna have to work the rest of the year on it. Instead of working 60 days on it, that's, that's the point I'm getting at. We, we've gotta make a decision as a council, as a community, what we're gonna give up. And, and you, you said in the hallway the other day that cities across this country can't continue to fund the services that they're funding today in the way that they're funding it. And, and I don't, the, the only way I know to do it is if we keep the same services is to increase fees, costs, taxes, whatever. The only way to get it down is to eliminate something. And we've gotta decide what that's going to be. And, and to sit here and do a five-year, to do a five-year budget is a little hard for me because some of us may not be here in two years.
And I wanna say something that-
He's looking at me. He's looking at me.
You know, I feel like you're both trying, but Tim, we started looking at a five-year budget and because it was easier to work on to, to understand what we were doing. Not saying we can't change it next year, but I think what he's saying is, when we put it in, it's in there for five years. We can change it next year.
I, I understand that part of it too. And I understand the, the financial goals. And I, I don't wanna lose sight of those, but I don't think we can take, we can't take that. Right now, we can't take that 30, 30 cent cut for the next five years. I'm saying for this year, and then let's work on it harder and look at it harder.
And some of those, some of those will continue to produce revenue above what, I'm not sure if, if the five-year projection originally had some increases built into it, did it?
Yeah.
Do you know, probably don't know off the top of your head what those are, but-
3% annual increases in revenues.
Across, just, you just did a general across the board?
Mm-hmm.
So, in what Tim said, what does that come out to, to you? What, what penny, what, where are we at? If we get some of those?
I mean, if you- You did 36,000 from Reclex and golf course and 12,000 from sidewalk. Nuisance abatement fees, what do you collect in nuisance abatement fees?
I think it was 20,000, roughly.
But that, is that all the $50 fees?
It's, well, right now, it's $50. Second offense, it's $100. And then that's collecting back what we, our actual cost on it too.
Yeah, so what, what portion of that is the fee?
I'm not, I'd have to look at that.
So, I would assume it's somewhere in the 4,000 range, maybe?
Yeah, some of them, and the $100, once we get to the $100 admin fee, that's equal to what it costs to actually do the service. So it's, and it, it might be 30 or 40%, probably tops.
So, maybe $6,000?
Yeah.
So if you doubled the first fee on that, you're gonna raise another maybe 4,000? When you consider the, some of those are second offenses are already at 100, unless you're increasing those to 200?
I would increase those. I mean, I think some of it is, is what we're, I think as council people, some of it is, we're tired of it. I mean, the city looks like a pigsty in some areas and it's simply because we're not doing anything to make the pigs clean up their pigpen.
So, that's 36, 48, 54,000 dollars? And, was it, was 40 cents took out too?
I, is, is what you're saying, Tim, is that, I mean, just let me clarify. Cause you talked about 100 little things there, maybe 12, but you're saying that if you reduce the payback on, $200,000 on the deficit- if you reduce the payback on, two hundred thousand dollars on the deficit account repayment plan, which is, on, for anybody looking on the budget I'm looking at, it's on page seventy, we're spending about four hundred and fifty thousand a year reducing those, and you're saying this year to take it back to two hundred and fifty thousand, but then you're saying you have a way to make up some of that two hundred thousand?
Yeah, dollars and dollars, not, not.
Dollars, I mean, it's not going to come out to be a hundred percent, but I mean, certainly you have a way of saying at least you're going to get to half of it, or thereabouts during the year, in, in trying to recoup it through the fee structure of some things.
Well, and, and having said that, based on, based on what I'm able to pull out of the budget, because I don't have the individual, I don't have the individual fee collections, and that's where I think so much is lumped together, that it's, I just use my best guess for figuring out what, what some of these were, and I did give Stephanie a call, and a couple others a call on different fees, just to try to verify it, and that's where I come up with the twenty thousand on the nuisance and, and the, and then the fees at the Recplex and the golf courses.
Man, if we could get by just a year, and have the rest of this year just to kind of, to be able to digest stuff and really take a deeper look at, at everything and really kind of find out, I, I would, I would love to be able to do that.
That's part of our job, I think, because this is a continuous process.
But I, I agree with what Shane's saying, if we could just move on this budget.
Oh, yeah.
And then really hit these things, that take more time to go into.
I think last year you guys were just worn, tired, I mean, just really worn out, I mean, from, I mean, it's not a criticism, I'm just making just kind of a flat comment about, I mean, it wears on you, and I, and I get that, I think you're just worn out from it, and I think it was stressful to have to go back and try to, to really do the work that it took to look at each one of these programs and saying, you know, what, what's this costing the city, and how can we try to find, if we want to have some of these quality of life things, how can we smooth those out so that we can find a way to pay for the, not just the necessities, not the potholes, the fire and the police, I'm talking about the, the other quality of life things that, the frills on there.
That make it worthwhile to live here.
Yeah, and so, but, but some of those things have to, they don't necessarily have to be self-sustaining, but they certainly have to be more sustaining than where we're at, and some of these, like the golf course, at some point has to become self-sustaining, or we just don't need to have it.
I think it is close to self-sustaining now.
Well, it was in the profit picture last year, but we're unfortunately fighting that twenty or fifteen, I looked at, I looked at some budgets that went back probably ten or eleven years, and they were in the hole then, so.
And somebody called me on that and said something about the course had to be, was it reseeded or something?
There was a chemical that was used on it, apparently, maybe, in the last, do you know anything about that? Eric?
Yeah, there was some chemical, I think Spirit Hollow at the time also had the problem, they actually sued them, but I think, from my understanding, the city didn't go ahead and sue them.
Did we get, so we didn't receive any kind of monetary settlement?
No.
Can I just speak to the golf course? Can anybody speak in the audience of your working?
Uh, no, you have to be invited up.
Can you invite me?
Hey. On, on the?
Golf course?
Sure, I'll invite you up. Just remember, I sent you an invitation.
Thank you. Dave Weemer, twelve fourteen Messiah, I play at Flint Hills, it's a wonderful golf course, you suggest raising them five percent. I'd suggest maybe six or seven percent. I think people who want to play there will pay it, that's what I'm suggesting, and I'm one of them.
I'm glad to hear that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of seven percent?
And, and I think we have, yeah, and I think we have some other things that are along those things, well, we're out of line on a few things, and, and I think that we need to systematically go through and probably look at everything across, it does take a lot of time to do that, and we cannot be expected to do it in forty, you know, in forty-five days.
But some of these I like, that Tim has, that I think, I think we could do right now, you know, the nuisance money, I think that's something we, we should do right now. Raising the fees, five percent.
I'm confused about where we've already raised it to a hundred on the second offense, you wanted a hundred on the first offense?
On the first offense. And the second offense, how to go on?
I'd make it, yeah, I would double that to, I mean.
Maybe they'll start thinking a little bit more about it, because it is, it really is, it's getting old.
Eric, do we send, we don't fine them right away, do we send them a, a letter to begin with that says, hey, you, you need to clean up?
Yeah.
The fine only comes in place when?
The man hours, the time, the time that goes in.
We send them a bill and?
Oh, oh, so the, so the, so the resident actually has a chance to clean it up, it's when we're doing the cleanup for them. You're way too mi, you're not too nice on some of that, so.
But unfortunately, a lot of that gets put on, doesn't it, on taxes, and then it doesn't get paid, that's the unfortunate part of it.
Does upon, I mean, it's, does upon sale, so, and some of those are, if they're out of town people or whomever, but I mean, they still need, we still need to put it in there, we need to put some more teeth behind it.
Are we all, are we all okay with the hundred dollars first, first offense, and bumping that up to two hundred on the second?
Yes.
Absolutely.
On the golf thing, I, I wonder about doing some kind of small discount on the season passes, and then raising the individual a little bit more, maybe raising that, maybe the seven or eight percent, and kind of doing something different on the season pass. Season pass is pretty cashy.
Why would we reduce the season passes?
What, what's the question? How much is a season pass?
Not reduce it.
Did we, we raised the season passes last year, didn't we?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, we raised all the, the season and the weekday daily fees.
I think we need to take a look and see what the fees are around, and see what we can, and see how far we can push it on those.
I can bring some comparables to you.
Somebody told me, Shaffer, so much, I have no idea.
I just looked at another city, another like city, but not around here, and their fees, our daily fees were, our season pass was higher, but our daily fees were lower, so that's why I suggest on the daily fees, because it didn't make any sense to me on the, the daily fees.
We have a six hundred and ten thousand dollar deficit, and I think we can, we need, we need to get this.
Well, I guess if it was because of chemicals and stuff, that needs to be paid back, because the people have benefited from the treatment and, and to help pay, pay that off.
Okay, now, let me get back to the monster at the top. What about the, what about the two hundred thousand dollar increase? How's that, is that, can we do that? How is that going to affect us? Is that going to, is that, is that, go ahead.
When, at some point here this year, we'll have to go to Moody's and go through a review, and if you change the reimbursement of those deficits from four hundred and fifty thousand down to the two hundred thousand dollar range, but you don't address how you're going to take care of it, you don't have any plan of how you're going to do that, and we went to them last year and told them we'd have that addressed in five years, and they said, they expressed their confidence in what we'd done, and took us off negative watch on the one, left us on negative watch on the sewer side, it will not put us in, in good light. One of the things that Travis mentioned in regards to past practice is, when they've gone through reviews in the past, two thousand and eleven, when we went, were originally put on negative watch, was not the first time that a question was asked or raised about our deficit accounts. Staff always told them, we're working on it, we have a plan to address it, and it never got done. If we go to them at this point, they have a, there's a track record of our community not following through with what's been said, and now we go to them, typically it's fifteen months after a ratings given, that, that's what, where it was last time in March, that would put our next rating cycle somewhere around July. If we go to them at that point, and we are not following through, and we don't have a way to follow through, we're working on it, but we haven't figured out what that route is, it doesn't create a whole lot of confidence in them. Now, that, that's up to you as a, as a group though, do you, do you care?
Let me ask you this, what about, how bad is, because some of these, some of these increases are addressing some, I...
I mean, when I, you know, can I say something to you? Because I'm looking at.
Well, go ahead, I'm just saying, I would like to, I would like to decrease something, I, you know, I don't know if, if the two hundred thousand is too much, go ahead.
Well, when I, I mean, there's, I think there's two-pronged approach to it, I think Tim brought some good ideas to the table on how, it's not like we're just saying, we're not going to pay the two hundred thousand this year. I mean, he's brought some substantial things to the table, and I think he feels confident that we can work together to change some of the other things that simply weren't addressed last year, I mean, for whatever reason, we may have wanted to even, Shane said clearly that, you know, that one of the things that they wanted to address just didn't get addressed, and it just didn't happen, but I think that you, I think there's a good team to make a systematic approach to addressing these things, and when I look at, I mean, it shows us putting down four hundred and fifty thousand this year, four fifty next year, four fifty five the following year, three twenty, and then two fifty in eighteen and nineteen, so if Tim brought forth, just, we'll just use the rough hundred thousand dollar number now, and, so that would push off a hundred thousand, I mean, there are a couple of years in there which, you know, likely you could, you could push that hundred into without saying that we're not addressing it, because we are addressing it, we have a plan for it, it's just, I mean, you maybe put fifty thousand of it in year twenty seventeen, and fifty thousand of it in year twenty eighteen or nineteen.
I guess, and, and hearing all that, and I guess I'm reluctant to do it one year into this, that's what I'm bothered about, that we said we're going to do this, we gave our word we're going to do this, I guess I kind of, if we change that, the amount, and don't set us, you know, pay off as much as we told them we would, are we good for our word? I mean, we said we would do this, they're looking at, we're saying we have a problem with our finances, they're saying we have a problem with our finances, and this is how we want you to address it, and...
But I think we're saying that we're addressing it, I don't think, we're not magically making it go away, I think Tim's saying that we have a systematic approach, it's just different than stealing from the general fund to do it, we have a systematic approach that we're going to use to look at, you know, everything and get through it, so I really think that, I think when we're looking at some of these fees and stuff, maybe what we can do is project out some increases for a two or three-year time period, instead of just doing it for a one-time deal, instead of saying, we're going to raise the golf fee, fee seven percent this year, we can say we're going to raise it seven percent this year, and four percent in three, or whatever the, the number has to be, so.
But I guess then what you're not saying is to not pay it, you're just funding it a different way, I mean, that's the part I'm having a hard time grasping here, you're not saying not to fund it, you're just trying to find things to cut that would make up for that funding, or are you saying?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the gist of it.
So if he's not saying that, then we're, then we're good for what we told them, right?
But it's not, yeah, but we're not.
Not if you don't have, you have to have the solution.
We don't, I'm not showing where the money's coming from, as I said, we're going to work on it, but we're, if we, if we were to cut that to a hundred thousand instead of two hundred thousand, with the, with the fee increases that I was talking about, where does that put us?
If you reduce it by a hundred thousand?
Reduce the, instead of two hundred thousand, reduce that figure by a hundred thousand, and then add back in the, the.
You increase the golf course and Recplex is about thirty-six, you reduce it, if you reduce the sidewalk through the five years at twelve thousand, and the nuisance abatement fee increase another six, you're offset about fifty-four thousand annually?
Is that, wow, is that including the bees money too?
Bees money's already been taken into account here.
Where more would that put us in total? Everything that we've done thus far?
Prior to tonight, with the bees and the cuts that we've made before, it's going to take a forty cent, still a forty cent property tax increase, if you take off, if you increase these fees and reduce the sidewalk, you have eliminated fifty-four thousand annually, which come, is effectively, about seven cents, eight cents, somewhere in that neighborhood.
But then we still would be saving money for...
But that's staying, that's still putting, if you're getting the deficits taken care of in the same type of timeframe.
That would still be funding about that four hundred and fifty thousand dollar level.
I would be agreeable to that, I think, if we can continue to pay down the deficits and raise some of these fees.
I mean, when I, when I look at the deficit reduction, Becky, when you look at that page, we've really been burdened with, it goes four fifty, four fifty, four fifty, three twenty, two fifty, one seventy-five, I mean, so, I, I understand why you get it paid down, I, I don't doubt, I don't not see that piece of it, but I feel like that we've just really backloaded it on something, and we don't have any experience, we, we put a lot of money on the first couple of years, and we don't have, we haven't had a chance to go back and revisit some of these other things, and we piled it all in one place, and I think what Tim's saying is, can we unpile a little bit of it this year, and if we can't work through this, then put it back on, I mean, you guys only took three sixty towards, I don't know what the final number was, three sixty towards deficit reduction last year, so you're asking for another hundred and ten thousand on this year's budget over last year's?
Last year, we, did we budget more, but then we couldn't do it? Because even, no matter what we budget there, there's things that could happen that could cause us not to be able to do that, you know?
We kept it at the same level that we'd had it at. Part of why I think it was, it was set up three sixty, and then going up to four fifty, four fifty, I mean, the franchise fee was going to be used to help to offset that, now that revenue's not there, the reason it goes down and out years is because our revenues shrink, I mean, our, our revenues are growing one point, one percent annually, our costs go up more than that.
I guess, I think that's front-loaded.
But part of it is, yeah, we wanted it front-loaded.
Yeah, for you front-loading it, yeah, so.
And part of that is, is that having a soft landing coming off of it, too, building it in, but you can change the figures to where it's equal amounts on the, on the years.
I was going to ask you about that, now what would that?
In the grand scheme of things, I'm looking at, what do you need to do to get to a spot to where in five years, you've eliminated your deficit, and you've gotten to that fifteen percent cash balance? If you have that as your goal, whether you pay a big chunk of it in the front year or you backload it within that plan, it doesn't make a difference.
Yeah, we, I don't think we want to change the goal to get there, I think we just want to change how we're getting to the goal.
Without property taxes and to find something else.
Yeah.
But if we don't have the property taxes plugged in, and we try to put a plan together and say, well, if you don't know, I know what your source is to make up that difference, you put yourself out there with no credibility. But you, you don't have an identified way to make it.
I guess that kind of makes me think, go ahead with this, and then go after it all year for reduction next year in tax, in property taxes, because, because of the timeframe and everything, and because of the fact that we said we would do it, and, and I think we should stick to that with Moody's, because I think that's important. I would rather get a bigger chunk now, know it's done, than to think we've put it off and put it off, when we don't know what's going to happen in the next few years, and we could have another big flood, or something that would take that money anyway, so.
I, I personally would like to see a decrease, I mean, I, I'm looking at numbers, and I don't see us getting it down to zero, but...
Well, I'm for the compromise of that, I'm for the seven, seven cents less, and, but to continue to pay down the deficits, was that right? It would be about seven cents, so that would bring us down to...
Somewhere in that neighborhood, thirty-three, somewhere in there.
Thirty-three, I think that would be a huge improvement over where we started at sixty cents.
And I think it looks like, it looks like that we have, after this year, we have about two point one million dollars in deficit account funding to finish funding. million dollars in deficit account funding to finish funding. Is that correct, Jim? Am I missing something when I see that?
Yeah, 1.9 over the next five years on those major accounts.
I showed it going out till...
I don't have anything in 2020. I don't, I don't think that we have anything that's set to be paid off. Or maybe we do, and I just don't show it on this sheet.
Yeah, you got that 175 number there.
Still left on, that's on the auditorium.
What do you think, Mayor, 33 cents? Almost half of what we started.
It's closer.
So that's, I mean, even at the 1.9 for five years, that's 380,000 a year on average. And Tim's, I mean, you're saying that you think we can...
I want to do the things that Tim said. I just don't know that I think it's prudent to say right now onto this budget that we're going to be able to follow through, and it's all going to come out exactly, you know, how we say it's going to come out. I guess I would like a little, I'd like to work out.
I think we should push ourselves to do it. I mean, I really think we should. I think, I think when we back off of things, and I think it happened last year, because we thought the franchise tax was going to go through, and I think we backed off of doing things, and then when it didn't, I mean...
No, it's the opposite. I think that we knew we had to cut things, because we thought the franchise fee wouldn't go through.
You still worked on transit. You were looking at outsourcing transit. You're still working on the auditorium to outsource that. I mean, we continued to work on things last year.
Yeah, and we didn't know slack off, because that made us pick it up more when you saw that. We felt that.
Well, yeah, you got pigeon, I mean, you got pigeonholed into doing that. That's, I mean, there's no doubt about it.
We were doing that before the vote came through, because we knew that we had to know what it was going to be.
But here's, here's my thing. We run this through after, I mean, some numbers, you're not going to be able to get definite numbers, but I mean, we can still, we can still have an idea on where we need to, on where we're gonna, where we're going to be down to our tax line. We can have a ballpark figure.
We're talking 32 cents.
Or 33, isn't that what you're saying? And that's kind of tight. At 33.
I think we have agreement. I think it's impressive. And Tim, you started the whole thing.
I'm taking my kiss back.
I'm not rubber stamping this.
Good for you both.
I mean, what's your thoughts, Tim, on getting to the 200?
Well, I, I don't know for sure where we're at based on the recommendations that I made. And if the council's supporting those recommendations, then I would say for the city manager to find exactly where that puts us, and then we can, then we can decide from there where we want to take it. Right now, it's by guessing, by golly, and, and that's really what my figures are, because all I had was the budget in the hand to, to go by, and it's, it doesn't break down the, the expenses and the revenues by category. It's by department.
Then we have to pass the budget.
Yeah, that was my question. Do we, by next Monday, is that right?
Yeah.
I have to do it in the Hawkeye Friday.
This Friday.
I guess, I would agree with the 33 cent, knowing that we could cut the way that Tim said.
Let's do it.
Because I think we're okay at that point, part of it, Tim. The part that we don't know is the part on the paydown, which we can work on that.
I'd like to see us extend that budget or that deficit repayment out. I just, I think that, I think it didn't happen, I think it didn't happen in five or six years, and I think we can't, I mean, I think it's not...
That would take a lot of pressure off if you do that.
I think it's, I think it's been very stressful to have it put back on in such a short period of time on that there. I understand why. I get it. But I think, I mean, but to try, but to try to pay that back in the short window that we picked to pay it back.
Well, I think it's important, and I think, you know, if our bond rating people look at it and say, this is how it would...
I mean, like last year, last year it was okay to only pay 360,000 back, but it's not okay to go down that far this year. I mean...
I don't know. I guess, we don't know. That's the number I'm saying. I don't think we can answer between now and Friday.
The numbers for the next five years average out to 380, which isn't that much different than the 360 this year. And there wasn't any magic to, those could be averaged out to 380 a year, but it doesn't make in a, in a scheme of things, it doesn't matter how you have them split out.
We got to pay for it, because that was over a five-year period.
I mean, I think we've seen some things that have been negative that you weren't expecting. You saw a decrease in local option sales tax. I mean, do you feel that that's going to stay as low as it has, I mean, as low as it got to in the last couple of years? Do you feel like that? I mean, we see things like the hotel motel tax. I mean, you can't, no one has a crystal ball to know those things, but...
No, we don't. But part of what we build on is, I mean, even with what we have in local option sales tax, I think it's set 2% increases annually, and I think if we were to go historical trends, it's probably more like 1 to 1.5 annual trend. So I feel like I'm, I worry a little bit that I might be a little over optimistic with it as it is. I'd like to be optimistic and say it's going to rebound and be, and come back to a level that's comparable to previous years, but until it does, I don't want to build a budget that's based off of that. I want to build a budget that's based off of, take a look at where we're at now and build conservative trends off of that. So, you know, most of the revenues I don't like if I have a spot where I've built in something that is not a conservative trend on the revenue side, and is not on the high side, on the expenditure side.
It's too bad, too bad we can't build a nice conservative trend on the expense side that's realistic. I mean, when it comes to, you know, our, basically our labor expenses, I mean, that's the big nut and nut thing. So, I mean, it's, it's too bad we can't be more conservative on, realistically on that. I know you're looking at realistic numbers, Jim. I don't doubt that.
Even on the expenditure side, one of the worries I have with the, we have a, salary increases is built out with 2% projections at the, after extending beyond the life of our contract. Trend this year was 2 to 2.4 for settled contracts. Last year, it was 1.7 to 2. And two years from now, if that trend is 2.5, we take what trend is. You don't get to go to arbitration and force somebody to take less than trend. And we have a budget built on 2%, and it's on that 2.5, we're in trouble. So I'm afraid that, yeah, I might already be conservative on, on cost side too, which is troublesome.
So even if we change it for this year, since that is over a five-year projection, you had that figured in for that full amount in five years, so changing this year doesn't matter, because it was to pay it off in five years by the different amounts, and that the idea that we raised the property taxes, it would cover yet so much this year and so much to the total in the five years, I think is what he's saying.
Well, in that five years, are we also supposed to be at the 15%?
Yeah, actually, we told them last year, five years last year, and now we're getting to five years this year.
So we got four years left.
So we'd have four years left, and we're going to be over 12%.
If we stick with the...
If you stick with it the way it's set up. And getting rid of these deficits, this plan is based on getting rid of them over a period of essentially eight budgets. We started this, this is the second year, and you have five additional years plus a year after that where we're still working on deficits. So it's already an eight-year cycle to get rid of these.
Well, I guess, you know, for me, when I came on the council, probably the most important thing was to lower our amount of debt we have and to straighten things up. So I guess that's why it's so important to me. And, and I really want to see those get paid down and get us in a better financial position. But I like the things you've brought up, Tim. I think those are all... And I am, I guess I want to get this settled so we can move on, and I'm all for those raises or fees, and then to work into it in next year, and hoping that we can whittle it down next year, so we don't have, you know, maybe we can take it down lower, then we'd be on the second year of something, but I hate to not follow through with Moody's, I guess, after we told them we would do that in the very first year. I would be more inclined in the second or third year, but not the very first year, because it's like we said it, and we didn't even follow through in one year. So that, that bothers me.
I'm, I'm kind of right in the middle. I still want to fulfill our obligation, but to me, my, my deal was to get the, to get our bills paid, but at the same time, at what cost do we do it? And I, and I've always been, I've never wanted to raise a penny taxes from the time that I got on the council, and I've already had to do that, 75 pennies, and whatever we can get this down, I really am for. And by decreasing the, you know, if we're not going to decrease at the 200,000, I, I am for decreasing 100,000. I've got no problem with that, and raising the fees, and even though it doesn't, even though we're not sure exactly where everything's going to come out. What was said on the garbage? Did you guys say no on that?
No, we said yes.
Okay, okay.
You can, you can raise it. I don't know, you don't have any general fund money that's going in there, so it doesn't really have an impact on what we've been trying to deal with.
Did we put any general fund money in there this year? Are you saying we made, we made up a $154,000 deficit this year in one year without, without...
We made up a very significant, I don't know if it's 150, we, we made up a very significant amount by doing two significant rate increases in a row. That, that's probably the biggest, and not doing a purchase of a vehicle that was supposed to occur. So, yeah, we made up some significant ground, and it'll, it won't be as much moving forward, but we're also talking about rate increases over the future that are 2% annually.
In 2011 and 2012, it looks like we did transfer $150,000 into the solid waste. I'm looking at last year's budget. 2011, 12, it looks like we did transfer $150,000. It says transfers in. I assume that means general fund money?
That was back, the December 2011 bond issue, part of what you did was you borrowed money for garbage trucks.
Okay, so that, so the 25 cent increase can't be used to pay off that debt?
It would. It would pay that debt off, wouldn't it?
So now you want to, I mean, we're just, our whole goal is just to get to where, I guess our whole goal is just to get to where we're getting the garbage to cover itself, and to get rid of its existing debt.
Well, that's what I meant, its existing debt.
But you're, you're wanting to now use that money and start transferring it over to debt service?
No, I don't think that's what he's saying.
A portion of debt service payments.
If debt came from solid waste, then I wouldn't have a problem with that, unless you can explain to me why it would be a problem.
You can...
I think what he's saying, I mean, what I, what I was, what I was asking was, was there any general fund money that was transferred into, or, or for that matter, how are we paying back then the money that we bonded for? I mean, is that, did that come out of their budget, or is it coming out of the general?
When that was bonded for, it's coming out of the debt service levy, so if you want to transfer that to...
So in fact, the garbage really isn't. I mean, they're really not paying their own way if we're financing their stuff and then paying it out of debt service.
We were, at that point.
But with the increase, we have that covered, that covered that.
Yeah, future, all future purchases are being made out of that fund.
I would like to have that increase and have it reserved for...
I'd like to have that 150,000 back and put it towards some other fund that's in the hole, so... I mean, because if we took it from the general fund, solid waste should pay for their own, otherwise, I mean, we shouldn't be subsidizing that, that fund. And if we borrowed $150,000 and it's coming out of our debt service, then the solid waste piece of it needs to pay for their share.
So is that, like, under the capital improvement program, or how, what?
That was purchased back in 2011.
Yeah, before we were all on here, I guess.
All right, so where are we at?
But I mean, my...
If you're wanting to distribute fees and do a rate increase in solid waste to offset a property tax increase, you certainly can. That's, that's, I mean, that's effectively what you're trying to accomplish, and that can be done.
And I think, and I think the justification for that is to say that they took the money from general fund operations to begin with, if we're paying it back, and that's where it should go back to.
I don't know, it's why all this transfer stuff, it's so...
It's, it's a mess. I mean, we can, out of a $9 million issue to try to figure out what the allocation is for 150,000 and what's justified, but...
I don't know if I can invite two people the same night, Denise. Does anybody else want an inviter? Bishop said come on up.
Denise Powell, 915 North Third Street. My sewer, garbage, and water bill right now is almost $450 every three months. What I would propose is, I believe, the garbage tags are still at $1.50. Why not increase them to $1.75 and maybe get people to recycle a little bit more, instead of hitting the rest of us who manage to squeeze our garbage into one can?
Or $2. You know what? I invited you up, didn't I, Denise?
No, sir, you said that.
Sit back down, please. You're being rude. I'm just, I'm just playing. I'm just playing. But I receive that. I hear you there.
I mean, it's killing me. And you just throw something else on top of it, it's going to put me over $450 every three months. And it just galls me to begin, you know, don't get me started, but it's like, why not put more of a burden on people that don't recycle? And I think the garbage tags have been $1.50 since I moved here to Burlington, and that was in 2003.
Well, you know, shame on me, because I had somebody mention the same thing, and they were, they were even saying, they said they use two garbage tags, two or three garbage tags a month, I think it was, and they said they wouldn't have any problem paying five. Now, I, I didn't go through that, through all of that, but at the same time, I would much rather, just like with the nuisance things, to me, I would rather tax the people that are using, because with the water, because we don't have it metered, you know, there's a lot of people that aren't using that much water, but they have to, they have to get the hammer. So I, I like that better, just the figure, I, I think.
The $2? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I would say, I would say at least $2.
And maybe it would get people into recycling a bit more, and that way it decreases the use of the landfill, and maybe save our environment at the same time.
My name is Shane McCamell. I support that message. Okay, so we changed the, we changed the garbage to a...
Do you know how many of those we sell a year? Three.
Don, do you have any figures on how many tags are sold?
Comes to my mind is 1,780 tags a week, I believe, are what typically the retailers buy from the city on average. Somewhere around 1,760, 1,780 per week, I think is what it's, they've purchased from City Hall.
$46,000 a year.
At a dollar?
At 50 cents a pop, if you added 50 cents a, if you, that would be the increase, if you added 50 cents a tag to it.
I think that's significant.
That'd be 46,280.
Yeah.
But they may not use as many tags if we raise it, but still, it's significant.
I like a dollar better, but I'm grooving with 50 cents.
Well, that, that takes the tag from 1.50 to $2. Well, would it, Don, would it be, it wouldn't be a flat 50 cent increase?
We sell the tags for $1.45 each.
So you'd probably go to, if you did that, maybe let's just, so now I'd have to take that times...
So you think $2.50 is too big?
It'd be 37,000 if you took it times a 40 cent increase. And I would, I'm just estimating that they would let the retailer bind for 1.90, give or take.
Bishop, how you feeling on that?
Fine. I'm fine with everything. I want to vote. 33 cent tax increase, follow Mr. Scott's lead, and let's go.
If you did that, if you, that'd bring another 37,000 in on top of that.
On top of the 50.
50, whatever money goes.
That's covering.
So you're pretty darn close to your 100,000 number, Mr. Pretty darn close to your hundred-thousand number, Mr. Mayor.
Let's do it. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Okay.
What, what are we increasing the tag to? A dollar ninety, is it a dollar ninety-five?
Two dollars. Two dollars retail and the retailer would buy maybe for one-ninety, I don't know.
That's our new.
Oh, yeah, what did you say, one-fifty-five is our, yeah, that's what we'd sell. So it'd be, it would be one-ninety-five that we'd sell it at, ten dollars a week, right?
Increase of fifty cents.
Yeah.
Okay.
So wherever we are is where we are.
Where we are. Wrap it up.
You know, the rest we can, again, you know, we, I, I don't want, I don't want anybody to burn out on this. We got, we've got all year to continue to do some looking. And, but at the same time, I think the taxpayers appreciate us looking in other areas and digging deep. I, well, I know for a fact that they do, so.
Jim, do you calculate, did you calculate that around about a hundred-thousand-dollar adjustment in the budget or not?
Yeah, for, I don't, I don't know how long you wanted to justify transferring forty-five thousand over to debt service. Four, four years maybe?
Three or four years, yeah, I think that would substantiate the.
The fourth year wouldn't count towards that?
Right.
So, then your four-fifty divided by five is about ninety thousand annually?
Yep.
Impact?
It's pretty close.
It's. Ninety thousand works to? That's like thirteen cents off of the forty. So like twenty-seven, twenty-seven cent?
That's, that's more than half of the reduction.
I can live with that.
My figures only came, my figures came up to fifteen and that was the best I had. So I'm definitely happier. Anybody else got anything to say?
I would appreciate if you could put that together in a, in a memo and email it to us when you have all those.
All the sheets?
All those numbers finalized.
Yeah.
And Mayor, I still think we need to meet one more time after we get that. And she's got to publish Friday. We need to meet one more time. I don't think we need to have all the staff here and put them, beat them up anymore, have them go through this beating. Because when you look over there, it looks like they feel like they're going to be, so.
Well, the next meeting is just going to be going through the numbers anyways and see where we're.
Just, so. So we know where we're at, so the public knows where we're at.
Mm-hmm.
So the finance director knows where we're at.
Hey, I want to say thanks to the council for digging deep and, and for being open-minded. This has not been easy. It's, it really has been a drain on everybody to try to make as many people happy as we possibly can without hurting, without hurting as, as many people as we have to. So I, I do, I think, and Jim, Point Guard, I appreciate everything you do. So everybody's satisfied with that.
You want to meet Wednesday? They need time to be able to get forms done. It's going to be hard, just even on Wednesday.
What, if you get the email and you like what you see, can we call in and say yea or nay?
Well, and then we're going to vote on it anyway. It'll be yea or nay Monday, Monday.
March third, right.
Well, I mean, we have to vote.
You have to set a public hearing, but you, we need to publish.
That's have to be seven, seven days after the.
Yeah, this, next, next week's meeting will be authorizing setting the public hearing for the March third.
Right.
Council meeting, that's when you formally approve it. But we have to publish our revenues expenditures sum, summation of it.
You won't vote on it until March third?
Okay.
You'll approve the publication Tuesday, but I already have to have it out of the paper because it needs to go in so many days before the public hearing on the third. So that's just.
I guess I'm wondering then, what, how do we agree that we're all right with that number? Do we vote and like if three people say yes? Or, I mean, how are we coming to that conclusion?
Are you, are you willing to move forward? Is it, are you at the point where you're accepting of it? You can't make any official decision outside the meetings.
He needs to ask if there's any more adjustments. And if nobody says anything, then he knows he goes forward.
Right.
We're, we're just trying to get him to adjust it to whatever we've discussed in the last couple of work sessions.
Well, I'm probably all right Wednesday.
You're what?
I, we could meet, I could probably meet Wednesday, I just have, I don't know, I don't have my schedule, but I think.
Get me the email and I'll let you know what I.
All right, let's make it happen.
Okay.
We still got to consent gender ban.
Yeah, we still, we still got a ways to go.
Will we meet Wednesday evening? We don't, we're not setting.
Breakfast, we're going to meet at seven o'clock in the morning.
For lunch on Wednesday.
For those buying.
I'd say we, yeah. Can we do a morning meeting?
If you beat me in the bridge run?
Morning's our.
You know what, that was a low blow, you ought to be ashamed of yourself. I'm not going to really say what I'm thinking right now. What, so, okay, what else do we have then? We've got?
What time on Wednesday?
Four?
Well, four's fine, or lunch is fine.
Can we do lunch?
Lunch would be better.
Yeah, that's, that's good.
Noon would be better for me.
What, what did you say?
Is that okay for you or is that going to be, give you enough time for you?
We have, love to adjust a meeting, but I think.
Do lunch, I'll buy pizza for staff.
If you buy pizza, I'll buy the mouth to buy it.
He just said he didn't want his staff here.
Or to eat it.
I said staff, I'll buy pizza for staff.
You got a better attitude, Tim.
I'll bring the mountain.
I can't buy for elected officials.
Jim, can you do eleven or noon on Wednesday?
I think, well, we can do twelve. Eric and I have a meeting at eleven-thirty, I think we can probably adjust it.
Noon where? Here?
And does that give you guys enough time to read, to adjust the numbers, Jim, you think, or Stephanie?
Oh, he's good.
A net.
A net?
You can do it? Okay.
Yeah, that's better than tomorrow.
Yeah.
Okay.
Sorry, guys, but we appreciate it, we appreciate it.
Okay.
Should we call that a work session again? Is that what that turns in?
What about the resolution approving the urban revitalization tax exemptions pursuant to chapter four oh four of the state code of Iowa?
I'm sorry, I was, we do have to have twenty-four hours, so will that give Kathleen enough time to get up? Sorry, what was this?
The tax abatements.
Okay. What would you like to know?
Annual report. We have to annually file with the county all the applications that have been received. It needs formal approval from this group before it goes, but they're all in conformity with our ordinances. It'd be a decent summation.
Yes, yes, everybody, they have until February first to apply for the tax abatement in the last year. So then they're all gathered and then recapped, that was what was in your packet. And then we just recap what the, the cost, the estimated cost of the construction. Of course, their tax abatement will be on the assessed value, the increased and assessed value. So these numbers are just estimates, that gives you an idea in the location and.
So we're not really, what are we, what are we approving here?
You, you, you have to approve them. But kind of like the, the authorizing language when you have something like this is you put in place your tax abatement programs and people who are qualified then apply. Those that are qualified meet all the, the things. The ordinance, the sent, language essentially says the council shall approve these, meaning you have a somewhat of a fiduciary requirement to approve those applications that have met the requirements of the ordinances you have in place, so.
But they've all met the requirements though.
I'm kind of excited, fourteen new homes on there. I think that's nice to see that, we want to see more of those. That's a positive trend. I don't know where, where you were in the year before, prior to that. Eleven, so, so it is a positive number, so that's awesome.
Yep.
So once you approve it Tuesday night, then they go straight over to the county assessor's office to start their process of?
Resolution approving engagement letter for two thousand fourteen bonds?
Yep. The bonds that are on here that will be having to set public hearings next meeting, Travis will be here next week. We have two different letters that are required to be done and I hate trying to figure out which is which. The engagement letter, I guess, is this thing. No, this is disclosure.
And what are, and these bonds are for?
Uh, four-point-two million is, that's what this other, other sheet will have a breakdown of a breakdown of the, what the issue is, if you want to take one of those and pass it down. Four-point-two million dollars is refinancing series two thousand five, series two thousand eight A bonds for lower interest costs. And one-point-four-five, getting you the total of five-point-six-five. One-point-four-five is for new CIP items. And you have a breakdown on that one-page sheet that got handed out. Devaluation on Mount Pleasant Street Bridge, estimated twenty-two thousand for, for that. Our portion of Division Street, we have three-hundred-and-ninety thousand, something like that, from the SDP funds for that project. A million dollars broken down between the eight-eighty-six and then a separate miscellaneous, one-hundred-and-fourteen for street work. And then miscellaneous sewer rehab, two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand. Those are sewer lines and sewer manholes. And, and really not identified specific projects, but just going through the system and looking where we know that, where we find that we have some pipes that we know need to be replaced and having some funding in place to make sure that we can start doing it. We don't, haven't had any way to systematically go through and do this. These are all items that are off of the CIP plan that we've had under discussion. And the letter, the three-page letter stapled, those are mandatory disclosures, kind of letting you understand the relationship that we would have with Piper Jaffrey. So you understand what they do for us and what they do not do for us. And everybody had, really is clear on that. A lot of this didn't happen before two thousand eight. There've been a lot more requirements since two thousand eight on what proper rules are for everybody and disclosure on it.
Um, I know you've said in our five-year plan and everything that we could borrow a certain amount every year. Is this then the amount for this year?
One-point-five million, one-point-four-five. Yeah.
So this is it for this year?
Yeah, and even out of that, with the one-point-four-five, two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, that sewer, and it's covered out as sewer oper-, operating will make the repayments on those. So you're, you're, that's not all coming out of property taxes.
And the, the, the four-point-two million, are we refinancing some bonds?
Yes, the two thousand five and two thousand eight A bond issues.
And the one-point-four-five, we're not adding any tax for that? Is that's other stuff that's kind of come off of there and we're now?
The, which one?
One-point-four-five.
Oh, we're adding.
We are, we're adding.
Yeah, you cannot, part of the reason we have a property tax increase, fifteen cents of that, is to do CIP items.
Oh.
I mean, that's, out of what's left on the, on the property tax asking, that's over half of it.
But is that how you come up with the one-point-five million every year then? That fifteen cents on?
As we talked, as we talked about with Travis over trying to get debt moving through the system and where it comes off the book in a recommended amount at a, at a property tax asking that is typical. What, we asked, what does that amount to on an annual basis? A little shy at two million dollars, you can bring, you can go through debt issuance or tax-backed askings. We're very much over-leveraged right now. We're at, we were at the eighty percent.
Where's this going to leave us now?
At the end of five years.
Or at the end, I mean, does this change the picture this year?
Uh, I think at the end of this year, are we down to seventy percent at the end of fiscal fourteen?
I haven't done that calculation.
I, I, it's been a while since I've seen, he did. He has it on his, when he gave us those sheets back at the end of December. Just doing these projects, if we don't, didn't do anything else, at the end of five years, I think it gets us down to about fifty-six percent of our bond app.
And where was it? I thought when I was campaigning, I thought it was like eighty-five percent or something.
We were right around, we were right around eighty last year.
Eighty, yeah. It was like, it was eighty-one or eighty-two.
I think we finished seventy-six percent this last year. I don't know if you remember or not.
Last year and then this year would be?
And then the end of this year, I think it's the seventy. I'm saying this off the top of my head, I'm not.
Can you, can you just send me the information on the ones that were, that were refined?
Never, seventy-eight percent.
Seventy-eight percent this year.
I don't see.
In fact, if you go to one-twenty-eight, it, those show all the debt there.
One-twenty-eight does?
Mm-hmm. But it's still kind of hard to track.
Any other questions on that?
I guess we can always ask.
Can you just send me the information on which ones were refined and the rate and return? You know, all the junk that goes with that? If you would, please, I'd appreciate that.
Have we gotten that from Travis yet?
Okay. Well, you don't know, you don't know what the rate's going to be, you, I mean, I just.
Right, but he's done projections.
Okay.
I don't know if I, if I have those sheets.
We can get them from him.
Okay. And will you, would that include his fees, your, and the projections?
When, yeah, when he does, when they go to look to see if it makes sense, they, they incorporate all those fees.
They're calculating the whole thing in there.
Okay. Resolution approving acknowledged requirement disclosure for issuing bonds?
That was the other sheet that I gave to you, I think the amendment to the engagement letter.
There's like two or three of them together.
Uh, consideration of a general obligation corporation, or corporate purpose in refunding loan agreement and a principal amount not to exceed five million, six-hundred-and-sixty, uh, six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars and authorizing use of a preliminary official statement in connection with the sale of general obligation corporate purpose bonds, series two thousand fourteen A and general obligation refunding bonds, series two thousand fourteen B.
Set date.
Oh, set date for public hearing on March third.
Yeah, and again, Travis will be here next Tuesday. So he'll be able to answer some questions that you have on there.
Holiday on Monday. No meeting Monday, Bob, holiday.
President's Day.
You'll probably get free lunch somewhere, since it's President's Day.
That pretty much covers it. You might get anything else they want to have before we wrap it up?
It'd be wonderful to have a meeting that's less than two hours long.
No doubt. Bishop, tell them what we want to hear.
So Wednesday, then we're all together and then?
We're getting back every now and then.
You sure?
Dude, I'll go in, I'll go in on something.
Yeah, I'm, I'm a point, I'm a point. Yeah, I have a delivery.
What are we going to do? Yeah, just supposed to have an order?
I want to make a couple of notes to.
So who goes?
Well, this year.